Do we have two screens of?
Okay.
We are recording.
Okay, please rise for a moment of silent prayer and the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, roll call.
Live vote.
Yeah.
Wees. Wees.
I'm not muted.
Slick.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Addy.
Here.
Outer.
Here.
Reese.
Here.
Okay, before we begin tonight's meeting, we're gonna get a presentation from Bob Gross on economic development.
Council, thank you for this time. Earlier today, I sent an email out with two PDFs, the first being the housing study, not necessarily the PowerPoint you saw today, but I can send that PowerPoint out to you tomorrow with the actual housing study. And then also a part of that, the second PDF was the year-end report for economic development. I'll take, I know we're running behind, so I'll try to speed up the presentation and get into it. Amanda Sears is running the PowerPoint. So as you know, 2020 was a different year with COVID, had an impact on big and small businesses. Fortunately for Fremont and Sandusky County, many of our large employers were able to consider themselves as essential employees and were able to stay open, limit their shutdowns, and practice some safety measures through pandemic. So as we get into 2020 and kind of all the challenges that faced us, I feel, I take pride in our community, both the city and the county, and then how businesses were innovative in how to get their doors open, keep them open, and protect their employees. And so that type of work mentality really kind of, I think at the end of the day, helped us out. I think sometimes people want to criticize Fremont, but because I think we are innovators and hardworking people here, we found ways to keep our doors open. And when you look kind of at our budget and our financial situation compared to other communities, I think we come out pretty favorably. If you've been paying attention, a lot of the communities up and along the lake that rely on tourism have really taken quite a hit. And so we've, I think, fared better than a lot of communities that rely on other sources of economic development. I'd like to begin, I know most of this, so a lot of the stuff in the report, you're gonna hear again. We tried to bring this up throughout the year, but this is a good reminder. So we'll start with the International Cushion Company. That was a $3.6 million investment, $3.4 million new payroll with 75 new jobs added to Fremont, as well as occupying an empty manufacturing space that Fremont Plaxton had left earlier. So the fact that Fremont was able to land such a, such a good company and kind of occupy a building and bring those jobs during such a challenging year is a huge plus. But that wasn't our only success when it comes to manufacturing. In July, First Choice Packaging announced the $1.6 million investment of new machinery and workforce and nine new jobs. They've been a staple in our community for quite some time. And, and once again, we know as a city whose general fund runs mostly off of income tax dollars, the more jobs and the more people working helps our availability to provide services to the community. A big project here, Quality Steel, a 40,000 square foot addition to their building. If you remember, in 2019, they added a second shift. So they added 75, they had 75 jobs. In 2019, they added a second shift, which was another 75 jobs. And they're doing very well. And part of their announcement is the 40,000 square foot addition, $13.6 million investment, and another 80 or 18 jobs, bringing their job total to about 185 jobs in that location. Whereas if you rewind two years ago, they only had 75 or 80 jobs. So in the last year, they've added about 100 jobs. And then we get into the Freeman Company, over a million dollar investment in new equipment and machinery and adding jobs there, getting out and working with Beth Hanam, Sandusky County EDC, and doing our business retention and expansion visits. The number one thing we hear is workforce, workforce, workforce. We have jobs. We could hire five or 10 people right now, and we need those individuals to come and fill those vacancies that we have. And so these are probably our four most significant capital improvements from our manufacturing side. There is a longer list of maybe replacing old equipment, adding a job here and there, some smaller investments. And when you look at the 20 or 25 manufacturers we have in and around Fremont, and you know that these are companies that are proud to be here because they're appreciative of the workforce and they're routinely looking for ways to reinvent themselves and reinvest in their business. It gives us a sense of pride, and we should stand up and take notice of these companies because these companies are really so important to Fremont and because most of our residents, you know, work at a lot of these places, and this is their way to feed their families and keep a roof over their head. That's our manufacturing. We're gonna move on to small business. Obviously, you know, small business was a challenge this year. We've worked with several small businesses for them to help survive the pandemic. We use the Fremont Cares Small Business Relief Program to provide monetary relief as a result of business lost by the COVID-19 pandemic. In addition, Governor DeWine announced the $125 million grant program to small businesses. In addition, I myself have worked with several small businesses throughout the year to navigate the Small Business Administration's website and the Paycheck Protection Program and get their necessary documents and information submitted for the PPP relief. And lastly, we've had several small businesses utilizing the revolving loan fund and in an effort to provide some relief for those businesses, the administration sat down with Paul Grau, City Auditor, and revolving loan fund and decided that, first, I think it was for six months, we suspended payments. And then, because, you know, there was so much unpredictability and not sure how the pandemic was gonna play out. So I think we did that in April, and then six months went by and we weren't really any better off with the pandemic or coming out of it. And so then that was extended. And I think the revolving loan fund committee will have to sit down and figure out, coming up in April will be the one year. Now luckily, some of the businesses only took advantage of it for a few months. Some of them appreciated that was there, but they were gonna continue to try to make their revolving loan fund payment, and they did. And so while we offered it up, you know, in truth, in truth, I think of the four businesses utilizing revolving loan fund, only one took advantage of it and rest kept paying. So that was, I mean, that was, that was fortunate. Many of you seen the construction of the new Chipotle Mexican Grill in Aspen Dental out there on 53. While we always want to support local business, we hear the cries for options and something new to come to town. We look forward to their grand opening happening in probably late March. We've had several businesses, new businesses coming to downtown. If you saw the report, report the Alabaster Jar opened up in downtown Fremont. The party starts here, moved from its east side location to downtown to occupy that building on Front Street. There's some pictures of some of our downtown businesses. So while there's always room to grow, several businesses moving into the Brady Building and occupying that. You know, our focus, you know, obviously is Front Street, and I think that's the request. But kind of expanding beyond Front Street, we learned through the housing survey that Pete DeSalvo completed, that maybe there aren't as many people informed of all that's available in downtown that we had hoped for. And so maybe taking our attention either up the hill or out the State Street and kind of getting some of those locations occupied with new businesses, obviously helps our downtown and kind of expands that area. The efforts of the administration to help small businesses keep their doors open until better days has arrived. It's helped family pay their bills, put food on the table. And keep in mind that it's these small businesses that often sponsor our kids' sports programs, give donations, and helps support a lot of our 501(c)(3) seasons. So we just feel like, as a city, doing what we could to give back to them and helping them keep their doors open and making sure that they land on their feet was important. So you see, and I apologize, so you got the open house that opened up, you know, I guess I want to take a second to picture the open house. I'm not really an art guy. I'm learning to appreciate arts, and that store is really an amazing store. Local artists are permitted to put their art in there with a little bit of rental space, and then you can go in there and buy whatever art. In that case, it's a painting. And so the local artists make a little bit of money, and you have local artists and maybe it's a unique, one-of-a-kind piece of art for your home. So that's a little bit about the small business. I won't talk, I won't take too much time to talk about housing. It's a part of economic development. We learned that a little bit ago. Here's a brief diagram. Oldest housing stock in Northwest Ohio, rental market saturated, homes listed for sale but don't meet the demand. So like I said, I'm gonna kind of gloss over that. We just kind of spent 40 minutes going through it. The one thing I did want to address, and this is the slide that maybe we aren't aware of. So Sunset Meadows and KF Venture Project on East State Street broke ground a few months ago. And multiple phases, approximately 40 homes each phase. That's the city's newest subdivision. Sunset Acres, if you remember, the Sunset Villas that council approved the zoning change to. Site plans were submitted to our engineer's office, hoping to see construction on that here in a few months. And so that is a second housing project. For those that are not familiar with Meadow Creek, Meadow Creek is on Smith Road across from Grace Community Church. I think five or six new homes went up in that area. And so I think with the advantage of the CRA and the need for housing, I think an area that was a little slow-moving for a short time had kind of got kick-started, and we've seen new homes built there this year. And then finally, St. Andrews Fairway Vista. For those that are not familiar with it, it's kind of out there and, you know, I'll buy, I'll be behind the Country Club, St. Paul Drive, Norbert back in there, kind of some nice, you know, that would, you know, in layman's talk, that would probably be kind of a higher valued homes. If you're looking to build homes in the three to four, $500,000 range, you know, that would be the location where you could see those type of homes. So we do have some developments in various stages and that, hoping to see those developments continue. And I'm expecting and hoping that we'll see home construction and continue, and we'll see a lot of homes being built to address our housing needs this, this year. Moving on, we obviously talked about Dora. Since we've passed Dora, I've had lengthy conversations with two communities, asking us for our information and how it went and walking them through it. And I think, you know, it's, you know, the one thing we talked about here is a little bit of a weird time to launch Dora, January 29th. But we had everything, you know, when we passed it in October and we had the lead time, we didn't get it done by the New Year's Eve as we were hoping. We were close, but with COVID and shipping delays, the cups just didn't arrive on time. And so you would think January 29th is a weird time to launch a designated outdoor refreshment area. But talking to many of the establishments, it seems to be working out in that it is a slow launch. So you can slow play it a little bit, learn as you go. And I think even the very first weekend, people went out. I think there's a picture of that on the next slide. Yeah, so there's Deb and Greg Kohler from the 818, along with Big Nut and his wife. That's taken that Friday, January 29th. And I think they may have been the first four to try out the Dora and sent us a picture. So while we know it's snowy and it's not being utilized to its full capacity right now, I think this is allowing establishments to ease into it, to deal with whatever hiccups that may arrive, continue to educate them and their staff and their patrons on Dora. So then, as the weeks go and the weather warms up, and maybe we get into late March, St. Patrick's Day, April 1, now that we've, we've had six weeks of dealing with it, we're a little more prepared as the spring and warmer days come to Fremont. We'll, we'll keep moving here. Couple projects here, obviously, the Outdoor Amplifier. We talked about that. I've tried to keep council abreast of what's going on there. There is an Outdoor Amplifier Committee of folks from the city, myself, the mayor, Ken Frost, Paul Grau, members of Rotary, members of Downtown Fremont, Inc., to try to kind of collaborate and put this together. We're working with Thomas Porter Architects and out of Toledo, an edge design out of Toledo, to come up with a print and come up with what this is gonna look like, our hope. And you can kind of see our timeline here. We've already experienced some of this timeline, so 2020, 2021, demo of the Jackson Annex and the building at 310 Burchard. We're hoping by April, we'll have a virtual video of what a, the Outdoor Amplifier may look like and some prints and be able to release that to the public. We have been meeting with this group, going over some of their initial looks and giving them feedback and then trying to lay out a plan. This may be, the construction of this may be laid out in phases where the city may go in and have to prep the site, provide the green space, provide some of the foundational work. And then, and that way we could at least begin utilizing sooner rather than later, and then coming back maybe in a secondary phase with Rotary and constructing the Amplifier. And finally, Phase Three, working in restrooms and kind of a concession stand. So I know some of those committee members are on here tonight. Paul Grau, Mayor Sanchez, Ken Frost, Scott Miller, Tom Kern, Kristi Bogaer. I don't know if any member of Rotary that's on that committee is here. I know there are members of Rotary on here. Rotary's been great to work with, and we just kind of see this as one more draw to Fremont. We talked about the housing. One thing we've learned in the housing, especially through that survey, are the amenities that people are attracted to, the amenities that bring people to your community. And so, you know, having an Outdoor Amplifier located inside our Dora, we think is kind of a great pairing to kind of continue to draw people to Fremont and to give people options and events to attend here locally and keep as much of our, you know, maybe even keep as much of our money here in Fremont locally as possible. So, so be on the lookout in April for kind of the grand reveal of what that downtown Outdoor Amplifier may look like. And then Rotary is putting together a fundraising plan. And I think our hope is, if we can get the plan revealed in '21, take a year, and we can maybe be out there in '22. We said '23, just being cautious, because we originally thought, well, boy, the cost of this was higher and, and we're not sure how the numbers are gonna play out. But if we break it down into phases, then we could be out there in spring of '22 and working on Phase One and maybe even Phase Two of the project. So, but I'll try to, you know, every couple meetings with council, stop and give you an update on that. We set out earlier this year talking about an industrial park, and you might recognize some of these slides in case there are members of the public that are here and hearing this stuff for the first time or they're, in case council forgot, we kind of talked about, and we're just out of industrial space. We have manufacturers in almost 100-year-old buildings. We get leads from the state that we can't submit a request for proposal to or a lead into Jobs Ohio because we don't have the necessary acreage or the availability of some of the requirements such as rail. And so this slide will look familiar, utilize a corporate nonprofit organization, acquire land from industrial park, corporation shall be organized exclusively with charitable education purposes. And so you see here, Bark Creek Industrial Park. That's our last industrial park. You know, if you remember, and I'm gonna kind of go through a little bit of revisionist history, group of business leaders and city leaders in the late 80s formed Greater Fremont Industrial Park, Inc., 501(c)(3), private non-for, not-for-profit development group. That was formed in '87, and then in the early 90s, that led to Bark Creek. Why is that important? Because Bark Creek, there it is. And obviously, some of these numbers fluctuate, but, and I just kind of listed earlier, you know, Quality Steel is now up to 185 jobs. So that industrial park accounts for about 650, 660 jobs for Fremont. And fortunately, most of those businesses are in newer buildings that still have quite a bit of life left in them. And so, and really, that's, if you drive back there, it really is, for an industrial park, it's really quite nice. And they do a great job of caring for their buildings and being conscious of the outdoors there. And so we are in need of another industrial park. We're in need of another Bark Creek. And so we are, we are efforting for that. Moving on to the next slide, for those that maybe are unfamiliar, this isn't necessarily uncharted territories. As for Fremont, like I said, we did it before with the, with the Greater Fremont Industrial Park, Inc., formed in 1987. But just down the street in both Defiance and Tiffin, Community Improvement Corp., Defiance County. They secured, they had secured funding from ProMedica through them buying bonds to purchase some land and develop that land, about 82 acres for an industrial park just on the outskirts of their town. And Tiffin, Tiffin Seneca Economic Development Partnership, much of their development in their downtown in partnership with Housing and Zeiss Development. You know, that was kind of at the, at the pushing of SciDoc in Seneca County. And so utilizing nonprofit organizations to help drive some economic development projects is, you know, is not new and not unique to just Fremont. As we keep going, we get into Fremont Development Corp. If you remember, we basically updated some of the bylaws and changed the name from Greater Fremont Industrial Park, Inc. to Fremont Development Corp. The city economic development team is, has worked with town boss, local attorney, to amend the name and change the bylaws and working to, we've appointed new members. And so we'll get to the next slide of new members, and so you can see who those are. So you can see, I feel like we have a pretty good cross-section of a city guy, Kristi Bogaer from around town, Tom Kern with Stylecrest, KF Ventures, we have Pam Jensen from ProMedica Hospital, Dan who is gonna get replaced by Chip Van Net or Steven Van Net, and then Tony Camilleri from, well, just retired, former president and CEO of Fremont Federal Credit Union, and Brian Gaffey, the president and CEO of the Moser Group. And so that is kind of a similar makeup of the board. You know, I mean, these are the type of fields and the type of board members that originated back in '87 from Greater Fremont Industrial Park. And so these folks from different fields and different interests that kind of help us launch these projects. As we go and we finish up here in the next few moments, here is this slide. So in order to kind of move forward with an industrial site, we need property with correct amount of acreage. The big one, I think the big one is, is property owner willing to sell? The infrastructure, what's the infrastructure there? Can we get infrastructure there? What financial incentives? And so in our case, the city of Fremont, having the CRA, I think, has led to some expansions. You know, Mayor Sanchez started in '16. One of the things that Paul Grau and I did was expand one of our CRA areas. And when we expanded the, that particular CRA, we included Bark Creek, just kind of thinking maybe it could help with development and get stuff going in Bark Creek Industrial Park. And fortunately, it has. You know, Quality Steel is utilizing the CRA in their development. Columbia Gas, if you remember, two years ago, Columbia Gas bought up a few acres and had a Columbia Gas station, a hub there. And that was in part, they were looking at other locations, real similar to the site they bought in Bark Creek. Because we had the CRA, that was one of their deciding factors in coming here. And we've talked to several other companies out there about possible expansion, improvements, adding square footage here and there. And so that, expanding the CRA to, to that industrial park has been advantageous to the city of Fremont. If we find a location, obviously, there's a number of soil sampling, environmental conditions we have to do. We don't want to run in, you know, we don't want any soil sampling, environmental, Phase One-type studies, surveys that might need to be done. And so we are working through a lot of these, and hopefully we will have, you know, some good information coming forward. So I know I sent the written report to you earlier. Is there any questions? Well, I'll tell you what, I'll finish this. So as we look forward to 2021, we continue to build on the positive momentum, Belt Rock, City of Fremont, Sandusky County. Oh, there's a couple of things in here. So, and I'm sorry, I'm going back and forth. I just want to mention, so obviously, the update of the codified, okay, here's the timeline for the industrial park. That was just a slide we used before. Sorry, Amanda, I jumped ahead of you here. So that's just a brief timeline of the industrial park we're hoping to kind of keep pushing for. But I want to shift gears a little bit to two other things that I think are important to development. One is codified ordinances. As you know, Pogomire Design, we've worked with them for almost 18 months, had a working group, brought in a group of experts. And thankfully, council passed updated codified ordinances, January 7th. And so many of our old antiquated and out-of-date zoning or building laws have been caught up, but that isn't still quite enough. Well, I also want to talk about the vacant abandoned building registry. So many of the buildings that we've seen progress in over the last year or two is a direct result of the, of Chief Foose and his drive partnering with Mayor Sanchez to try to clean up the city. And so Eastside Plaza, when they tore down most of that, that was a result of the company that owns that, which that company is located in Phoenix, Arizona. You know, just realized the building was old, in bad shape, and now they were getting into more costly expenses and having to pay registry. You know, the acquisition of the Jackson You know, the acquisition of the Jackson Annex, speaking to that property owner, you know, I think what motivated him to sell the Jackson Annex and help clean up that site is the result of vacant abandoned building that he owned, the Jackson Annex, and not wanting to pay the dues. For those that are not familiar with the vacant abandoned building ordinance, year one is four hundred dollars, and then it doubles every year for up to five years and caps out at sixty four hundred dollars. So four, eight, sixteen hundred, thirty two hundred, and sixty four hundred. And so when we passed this in two thousand seventeen and went into effect later that year, we had a lot of properties in the last year or two that were on year three or year four of their vacant abandoned building, and they were having to write sixteen hundred or thirty two hundred dollar check just to hold on to that empty building. So that's, I think that's led to some progress being made. I got a got a list over here, but those are just two of the buildings I think have led to getting demoed and cleaned up. And then some of the buildings that were on the list got sold and and got occupied, and people are fixing them up. You know, I know Councilman Sluke brings it up, Ed Sprague in the old Biscuit, Sunshine Biscuit Building, he's occupying that, he's employing people out of that. And while it's slow moving, speaking to Ed, he's committed to cleaning up that building and fixing it up. And then finally, and I don't know if any of the commissioners are still on, but I want to give credit where credit is due to the commissioners regarding the Sandusky County Building Department and kind of helping expedite that process for commercial builders needing permits and having their plans reviewed, having a local building permit has helped expedite that process and kind of keep projects close to their original timeline and moving forward. And that kind of concludes where we're at. Are there any questions over any of the information I just presented?
Thank you, Mr. Gross. You did a good job of getting the explaining the housing and the economic development situation.
You know, one, one last thing, there, I want to thank Rotary and Kiwanis, because I had mentioned this before, Kiwanis is working really hard on this all inclusive playground. And we're making plans with them. And and so if you can go to Kiwanis website, we've been working with our engineers office. And I don't want to get into long details, but I just can't, you know, cities have to have partnerships. And we learned that from the Housing Development Report, we need to have partnerships with developers. And we need to have partnerships with ED organizations, and we need to have partnerships with rural groups like Rotary and Kiwanis, because the city just can't afford to do these things on their own. And sometimes we're hamstrung by being government. And so it really does take a group and take a village to help our citizens out. And so I can't thank Rotary and Kiwanis enough for willing to partner with the city. And I can't thank Mayor Sanchez and City Auditor Paul Grau willingness enough to sit down and and see what the city can contribute and partner. And and I just know it's, you know, in the very near future, that all inclusive play park is due to open up in August, and you're going to see a lot of work done there for site prep and construction in June and July. We follow that up with the Amplitheteater. And those are a couple of great, when we talk about amenities, you know, we have jobs, and we talk about housing, but people want amenities. I believe those are two big amenities that really help maybe meet the need of those, you know, citizens of Fremont, as well as draw more people to Fremont. So I want to thank Mayor Sanchez and for his, you know, commitment to these service organizations and and just kind of making a point of the city to sit down and work with them and partner. So with with that being said, I'll wrap up. And if there are any questions, I'll zip it. All right.
Okay, well, I guess we'll continue with council. Thank you so much, Bob. It was a great presentation. Council has a copy of the minutes from the last meeting and has had a chance to review them. Are there any corrections or additions to those minutes? If not, they'll stand as they are. Council also has a copy of the agenda. Are there any additions to the agenda tonight? No? Okay. Then we're going to go ahead and get started. We have one reading tonight. Stevie?
First reading of ordinance authorizing fund transfers in the amount of sixteen million seven hundred and fifty dollars and zero cents for fiscal year two thousand twenty one for the city of Fremont, state of Ohio, declaring an emergency.
Is Paul Grau, yes, Paul Grau, would you like to speak on this?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. This is just our annual transfer authorization ordinance. We do this every year. The amounts, as you go through, the ordinance coincide with the budget that council passed late last year. And so this is now, we've turned the page in the calendar, this is just the authorization to actually pull the trigger on those ordinances or those transfers and get those made throughout the year. There's no need to suspend Rule Four. We typically introduce this right around now, and then it's approved by the end of March. And then I start making monthly transfers, starting in March, and we do a monthly through the rest of the year. So if there's any questions about where the money is going, other than what was discussed in the budget meeting, or or a reminder of where everything is going from the budget meeting, we'll, we can discuss it over the next couple of meetings, or feel free to shoot me an email or or give me a call. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I guess that constitutes the first reading of that ordinance. That's the only thing we have on our agenda tonight. But I did want to give everybody that's attending this meeting tonight the opportunity to speak if they want. And so I'm going to start with Angie Reese.
I don't have very much to say, except that the police department is working to keep everybody safe, along with the fire department. And the city crews are also working for that. I have nothing else to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim Slick?
Thank you, Madam President. Again, looking forward to Chipotle opening and a lot of neat things happening for our economic development team. Also, a big shout out to our city crews. We've been out with the Fremont City Schools Transportation Department, trying to get the buses through some pretty tight areas. There's just no place for the snow. So just everybody be cautious as you're traveling and not sure what tonight is going to, what's going to develop tonight and into the early morning hours. But just drive safe and just keep supporting all of our new businesses. A lot of neat things happening. That's all I have, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you. Justin Smith?
Madam President, I would like to just say how proud I am of the city crews of getting the snow taken care of so quick. We set the most largest amount of snow for since the blizzard of seventy eight, I believe. I seen that in a couple of different Toledo news outward news networks. So our community did a great job, and the city departments did a great job getting everything cleared up, that there was only one day of school missed due to the snow day with that, due to what that much snow is amazing. I did have the privilege of going to the Hayes Presidential Center on President's Day. Fremont is blessed to have a presidential facility, and so that was always a good event to see. And I'd like to just encourage people to look out for their neighbors and look out for their fellow citizens during these extremely cold and snowy days ahead of us. That's how I have tonight. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Chris Leibold?
I thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make sure people are aware that if they think they're eligible for a COVID vaccine, that you can register at scpublichealth.com. Or if you're uncomfortable, you can call GL Cap Senior Center hotline, and they will help you get registered. I know that they are administering doses at Memorial Hospital. Aaron's been giving some shots out there, and I know, I believe Drug Mart in Delve Hospital have been doing it as well. But you can get on that list at scpublichealth.com. And then the other thing, I just wanted to say congratulations to Monica Ramirez, who is a Fremont resident, SJCC grad, who was named to Time One Hundred's upcoming list. So I think that's a huge honor, and I just want a huge congratulations to Monica. And that concludes my remarks.
That is an awesome honor, isn't it, for her? Stevie, do you have anything?
No, I don't. Just don't forget the public notice.
Oh, yeah. I'll do that before I shut down. Thank you for reminding me. Bob Gross?
I think I've talked enough, but thank you for the opportunity one last night.
Okay. John Elder?
Thank you, Madam President. Bob, that was a great presentation. Thank you. Very informative, as always. And Ken, good job with you and your city crew keeping the streets clear. I'd like to give a shout out to Dave's Lawn Mower Repair, because he got my snow blower working just fine, and it came in quite handy this week. Chris, you stole my thunder. I wanted to bring up Monica Ramirez's honor, but thank you. One of the, one of our residents in the first ward. So it's neat, she's the president of Justice for Migrant Women. She's the author of an essay titled Dear Sisters that appeared in Time about three years ago, that became the impetus for the Time's Up movement that has been through the nation. And also, one last thing, a huge congratulations to Fremont's Charles Woodson for being elected to the Pro Football Hall of Fame. I always find Charles's story quite interesting. He's one of three children, all three had Division One athletic scholarships and graduated, or for the most part, I always think that, and all family that grew up in Delaware Acres. So dreams can come true, and and success can happen to anyone with hard work and obviously talent. So that's all, Madam President.
Thank you. Christine Weiss?
Thank you, Madam President. Just want to thank Mr. DeSalvo for his presentation. It's rather eye opening. And thank you to Mr. Gross for the economic development presentation as well. And shout out to our crews that helped with all the snow cleanup. And just a reminder to keep your sidewalks clear for our postal workers. That's all I have. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Ken Frost?
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to thank council for the kind words on the street department, and I will be sure to relay it to them. They're very much appreciated, and I'll make sure that they know that you mentioned them on this meeting tonight. That's all I have.
Thank you. Jim Melly? You're on mute, Jim.
I wanted to echo what everybody said about Monica. That's a phenomenal accolade for her. That's just amazing that she made that, and she's such an outstanding person. I had the pleasure of working with her years back in April, and she was amazing then, and she's more amazing now. So that's phenomenal. And the streets and crews have been doing an amazing job. They've been out there the whole time. And wow, they've really done an amazing job. I've heard everybody talking about how great it was and how how they were so effective at getting it done. So that's all I have. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Scott Miller?
I have to unmute. Let me join you this evening. Great presentations by both Bob Gross and wonderful job. There's a lot of information there, of course, centered to Fremont, but the county's going to benefit from everybody's efforts to go into this. Not only what the reports offer, but we have a couple of great opportunities at downtown Fremont, the Amplitheteater, as well as the playground equipment going in at Roger Young. And I can't echo enough how proud the county is of the residents, Ms. Ramirez, and of course, Mr. Woodson. We all know the history of Mr. Woodson, but it's worth looking into Ms. Ramirez's history. And it's great that she's identified as one of a hundred people in Time Magazine. And you can't go anywhere in our county, certainly Fremont, and not recognize the efforts by the street crews. I was around in seventy seven, when a big storm came through seventy seven, seventy eight, can't remember which year. And we were shut down for almost a week. And with about the same amount of snow and the efforts by the others that were put in, we're up and running in a half day to maybe a full day in some areas. But it really didn't paralyze us like it did the years gone by. So great effort by everybody.
Thank you. Danny Addy?
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to do a shout out to the road crews, because if you look on Facebook, there's all kind of people complaining about it. I think they've done a marvelous job. I know there's more snow coming, and so people take care of your neighbors. They might need a quick shovel through their sidewalk or whatever. Bob, you did a fantastic job tonight. I I just have to think that takes a lot of time to put all that together. That was, that was very good. Thank you for doing that. And one other thing, too, is, and I'm sure I can say this with some validity, we are not getting a Five Guys hamburgers. A lot of people on Facebook are saying we're going to have that out there. No, we are not getting a Five Guys. So anyway, that's all I had tonight.
Okay, thanks, Danny.
Yep.
Mayor Sanchez?
Thank you, Madam President. Just a couple of things. Obviously, I want to echo what everyone said about Ms. Ramirez and Mr. Charles Woodson and the street crews and parks and the other departments. Myself and Ken spent some time yesterday afternoon down with with the guys and Coach John Cahill and Pizza Palace and myself, we all, they they called, reached out, and we provided, and Ken, we provided pizza to them. And it was, it was nice just to be able to socially distance and feed everyone down there at the departments. The other thing is, today, just want to give a just a little shout out to Nikki up in the administration. I was in my office. She received a phone call from a seventy six year old man who, a resident who is was disabled and just financially strapped, and he hadn't been able to plow his driveway from the first round of snow. And I made a phone call to Scott's Maintenance, Scott's Lawn Care, and I asked Scott if he would be willing to help this gentleman gentleman out. Without hesitation, within two hours, he had his driveway completely plowed out. And I seen some posts on Facebook. So how cool was that to be able to do that? So if Nikki wouldn't have said anything to me, we would have never been able to get that done. And Bob, nice job on economic development plan. And city council, I think it's important for all of us. We heard it from from Mr. DeSalvo is we need to continue to talk more about the CRA. Bob, I don't know if you have any numbers on what we started with and where we're at now on CRA. Do you have those?
You're on mute.
Doggone it. So when Mayor Sanchez took office in sixteen, there were only two properties utilizing the CRA. This year, we're going to file with the state twenty eight properties, and there are eight to ten more kind of in the works, where they have filed out the application, and they're building the house, they're remodeling the house. And so that's where we're at with CRA numbers.
And I don't think that includes the development coming on the east side out there now currently, does that, Mr. Gross?
It includes houses in the Meadow Creek area. It does not include Sunset Meadow yet.
Yeah, so those are, so the numbers are, the numbers are going up. And I just, you know, the, to have the housing presentation done today, hopefully, you know, solidifies everything that we've been saying when we wrote the economic development plan just a few years ago. So thank you, Bob, for your hard work. And again, myself, Paul, and Ken, and Bob, or any administration are always working on these economic development opportunities. Jim Slick, thanks to you as well for what you've been a part of. So thank you all.
Thank you. Hollie Elder? Hey, Holly. You're on mute.
I know. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Madam President. I found Bob's presentation extremely interesting, and I was highly intrigued by the housing comments regarding the the price of housing and what is cost effective for the builder. Mr. Grau and I today met with the investment firm via Zoom meeting to discuss the investment for the city. It was an update on where we're at. And one of the conversations we had was the cost, the increased cost of construction. And I know that with COVID and shipment and tariffs and everything like that, the cost of construction has, the materials involved have really escalated this year. So any, any contractor that is interested in building in Fremont, we thank you, because it is expensive and it hasn't gone down. So I really appreciated that part of the presentation. But I also wanted to say really quick that we are now in tax season, and another aspect of And another aspect of a COVID year is how many people actually received unemployment benefits that may have never received unemployment benefits before for the CARES Act. And I just want to remind anyone in the community that did receive unemployment that that is taxable income. So you will have to, you should have received your tax forms in the mail. If you have not, you need to contact Job and Family Services and find out if those are coming. And if you are uncertain about how to file, I highly recommend contacting a professional accountant to help you with that. Many people this year are going to have tax filings like they've never had before, so just a heads up there. So thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Paul Groll?
Thank you, Madam President. To piggyback on Ms. Elder's comments regarding income tax, I'll comment a little bit about the city income tax department. We've had some press releases. There's a lot of useful information. I believe it's both on the income tax page of the city's website, as well as the finance page of the city's website on how the income tax procedures are going to work with COVID and all that. Our income tax administrator, Janet Schroeder, does an amazing job every year. She's reached out to discuss other income tax departments' procedures and how they're dealing with it this tax season. And, and she made the decision, and I, and she made the recommendation, and I made the decision that the income tax office in City Hall is going to remain closed to the public, but she can still do a lot of work via telephone. And at the building security at City Hall, they have some listings of important documents that you will need to file with your city income taxes. And so it's got her contact information on there, and it's available to get picked up. And she's very open and willing to work with anybody else going through the process. So as we go through and tax season continues to pick up, my recommendation would be, don't wait, especially this year, like what, what Ms. Elder said, with everybody having tax returns like probably they've never had before. I would get on it early, so anybody in your wards or in the city in general that you can get that information now to, I'd appreciate it. And it's, it's all available on the website, and Janet's number is available on the website. And so you can do that. I went to St. Joe with Monica. She was a couple of years ahead of me at St. Joe, so I've known her for years. So I'll just echo the congratulations and the pride to have somebody of her stature from Fremont. And obviously, the immense pride of having somebody of Charles Woodson's stature, calling Fremont his hometown, and a big Michigan fan. Last couple of years have been a little dicey, but, but I remember in high school, traveling up to Wisconsin, freezing my butt off watching Charles Woodson play Kevin Huntley heads up. And Kevin hooked me up with some tickets up there, and, and I froze, but I rooted for Michigan and dealt with it when, when they beat Kevin's Badgers. And I was staying with him and a bunch of other Wisconsin Badger football players at their house. So, but, but a huge honor, and like I said, a lot of, a lot of pride, obviously, from, from anybody like that that we've had over the years and going forward. So, and a huge, huge shout out, not only to the street crews. Everybody's done that amazing job of giving them some accolades, but to also throw those accolades on our police department, fire department, that was out there responding to stuff in the weather, and the guys in our, in both of our treatment plants as well, that were out there operating the plants to make sure that, you know, we were, we were up and running on those fronts, too. So all of the city service departments really, you know, answered the bell like they normally do and what we've come to expect from them, and, and have done another amazing job. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Bob Gross, you had a comment? Bob?
Yeah, I kind of put it in the comment section. Amanda Sears is on here. I really want to thank her. She is kind of the whiz behind the PowerPoint and, and helping, you know, put some of this stuff together and make it look really nice. And so I would feel horrible if tomorrow morning I walked in the office and I talked to Amanda and realized I didn't give her credit for helping put this presentation together. So I just want to acknowledge her efforts in front of City Council.
Well, thank you. Kristy Milger, are you there? You're on mute.
Yes, I am. Good evening, everyone. First of all, just want to say, very proud of our city. We're being proactive, not reactive. Think it's a great thing for our city to plan, have, and to execute. So thank you to everyone that was involved with that. The best is yet to come. That's the best way I can put it, and very, very excited for that. For downtown Fremont, we've been posting this for about a month now, but we have released our 2021 season schedule. That's on Facebook and the website and so forth. And we're launching on April third, so just want to keep you guys updated. But of course, we continue to work with businesses and make it look beautiful down here, as always. If there's any questions on that particular topic about upcoming events and anything else, I'll take that now before I talk about my next thing. Is there any questions about upcoming season or anything like that? Okay, the next thing I want to mention is I wanted to give recognition to Mr. Joe Wasserman. He is a big, big advocate for the city of Fremont. He's a small business owner, active in our local Catholic church, Terra Community College Foundation, and also on the, and also on the Architectural Review Board, which was the design group. He's helped me with projects. He's done a lot for our community. Unfortunately, he did pass away. So I wanted to give him recognition for that because that is a gentleman that's done a lot for the city of Fremont. And I just wanted to give recognition to him. Great gentleman and wore many, many hats in his life. So wanted to, if all of you weren't aware of that, to make you aware that we've lost a great person, but he enriched a lot of people. So wanted to mention that to all of you and to thank him and his family. So just wanted to mention that. I don't know if anybody has any other questions for me or anything like that.
I don't think so. Thank you. Amanda, do you have anything you want to say?
I think you, Madam President, I would just like to say thanks to Bob for allowing me to work on the PowerPoint presentation. It's always fun to get to see the results at the end of the year, and I look forward to seeing the impacts of the housing study in the next several years. Thank you.
Thank you. Charlie Shroko? No? Dan Henning?
There I am.
There you are, Charlie. You switched, and you left my screen for a second.
Well, I don't have a lot to add. It's been a very good meeting, very informative. Scott's pretty much hit everything. Number, just a county tidbit here, that everybody's asking us about the county fairs and what's going to happen. I know Duane vetoed the House Bill three fifty-seven back, kind of like the festivals and all the fairs were on hold. But I think there's some legislation going through that we're talking to our legislators about click and, and Reinecke that I think we're going to have a fair this year. I think there's going to be quite a few fairs coming out, and we don't have to worry about them till around June, July. And hopefully, the COVID situation will be better handled by then. So we're all hoping for the, for the best, right, Jim?
Absolutely. Absolutely. Good job, you guys.
Thank you. Dan Henning? No? Sonny Workman? No? And I see somebody named BH, but I don't know who that might be. No, Bennett?
I think I'm up. Can you hear me?
Oh, hi.
Yeah, too many buttons to press.
How are you?
I'm doing well. It's good to see all of you guys together and not one place. I appreciate the, the city crews and the work that they've been doing around town through the snow. And now they've got another pile of snow coming in, so I certainly appreciate all they do. And keep your cars off the street when we have a bad snow like this. It really helped us a lot. Thanks, Bob, for the report. It's good working with you. I didn't have anything to do with it, but I'm glad that you were able to get that all together. And we, we've seen, I see a lot of people around town who are helping their neighbors. Honestly, I haven't seen as much as I see now. Every time I go out, somebody's shoveling somebody else's walk, or they've got a snow thrower cleaning it up. And as a homeowner in Fremont, we lived in the same house for thirty-one years. And I can verify that the people up and down my street on Jackson, south of State Street, are just absolutely amazing people. And I appreciate when I wake up in the morning and I hear somebody with a snow blower cleaning all the sidewalks. I mean, that's supposed to be my job, you know? And, and I love doing it, but I'm, I tell you, these Fremonters are really good people, and I appreciate everything they're doing.
Thank you.
And my birthday's today.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday, Dan.
Yeah, I couldn't, I couldn't remember if I was, I couldn't remember if I was sixty-nine on the eighteenth or eighteen on the sixty-ninth.
Angie, do you have any, you said you wanted to say something else?
Yes, I'd like to apologize to Ms. Ramirez for neglecting to congratulate her. I did do it at noon at Kiwanis. I'm very proud of her. She came from a family here in town, a Hispanic family. Her mom worked at Cromwell Colonial, and her dad was, is the leader in the choir, the Hispanic choir at St. Joe's. Anyhow, I just have to give her a lot of credit for getting up there with all that work that she's done to prove herself, to improve other people's lives, and to help other people's lives. I'm very proud that she came from Fremont. I'm also very proud that Charles Woodson also came from Fremont, and he grew up in a similar life, life here in Fremont as Mrs. Ramirez or Ms. Ramirez. Very proud of them, and very much congratulations, Monica. Thank you.
Madam President?
Yes, Justin? I too would like to congratulate Monica Ramirez, and I'd also like to congratulate Charles Woodson. Funny story real quick. Charles Woodson was a, was a role model to all the youth of the late nineties and early two thousands. When he ran the Heisman in eighth grade, I still have the Michigan Woodson jersey that I would wear in eighth grade. And I was kind of the Webbo at that time, because my dad is a big Ohio State guy. His brother played for Ohio State. So I was like the Webbo, supporting Charles Woodson, wearing a Michigan jersey and an Ohio State badge. So that was one time I was a Webbo, was to support Fremont's Woodson. Thank you.
You're welcome. Cheryl, I see you're on here still. Did you have anything you wanted to say? No? Okay, well, I have a few comments. The one thing, of course, is a congratulations to Charles Woodson and Monica Ramirez. The other thing is, a gentleman came into our office the other day and doesn't live in the city, but is, travels the roads and just really raved about how well the roads were taken care of so quickly and such a great job that was done. So I wanted to pass that along to everybody, and hopefully, the city crews know how much that the residents and even non-residents of Fremont appreciate all their efforts. The other thing is, I should have announced this at the beginning of the meeting, but I just don't do things right all the time. But we will have a public hearing at six forty-five on March eighteenth. This public hearing is, the purpose of the hearing is to review the Planning Commission's recommendation to rezone parcel thirty-four sixty oh 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 eight two oh two from our one single-family residential to our three multifamily residential. This lot is located at the east end of Mulberry Street at the Dead End.
What date do you say that was?
It's March eighteenth, Danny.
It's eighteen. Great, thank you.
Does anybody else have any comments?
Make a motion to adjourn.
I second it.
Okay. Justin Smith makes a motion to adjourn. Jim Sleek seconds. Rocco? I think Stevie's frozen.
Isn't that frozen? Wee? Yes.
Frozen, Stevie.
I don't know how to freeze me. Just bye-bye.
Yes.
Yes.
Everybody just say yes, and we'll be through with it.
Yes. Yes.
Leibold? We're done.
Bye-bye, everybody.
Good job.